Welcome to the Revere City Council Meeting, September 19th. Please stand and salute the flag.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councillor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna is absent, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novaselski.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Councillor President Visconti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present.
Thank you. First, we'd like to mention that I spoke with Councillor McKenna, and she has been sick for the last couple of days and is unable to attend tonight's meeting. So she did want me to let her constituents know that. With that being said, I also would like to request a suspension of rules so we can take up Calendar Item Number 9 for the purpose of filling the vacancy in the Office of Councillor-at-Large. Thank you.
Calendar Item Number 9, Communication from the City Clerk notifying the City Council of the provisions of Chapter 147 of the Acts of 2004 for the purpose of filling the vacancy in the Office of Councillor-at-Large. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 147 of the Acts of 2004, if a vacancy occurs at any time in the Office of Councillor-at-Large, the remaining City Councilors shall act to fill the vacancy by selecting the defeated runner-up for City Councillor-at-Large from the last regular election. Due to the passing of Councillor-at-Large George J. Rotundo Jr. on September 11th, 2022, there remains a vacancy in the Office of Councillor-at-Large. The defeated runner-up for the Office of Councillor-at-Large is Mr. Anthony T. Zambuto, 87 High Street, Revere, Mass. Therefore, pursuant to the above referenced statute, the City Council shall fill the vacancy by selecting Mr. Anthony T. Zambuto to serve for the remainder of the unexpired term. I recommend the following form for the motion. Pursuant to Chapter 147 of the Acts of 2004, shall the City Council fill the vacancy in the Office of Councillor-at-Large by selecting Mr. Anthony T. Zambuto.
Roll call.
Some movements present.
Roll call on the motion, Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna is absent, Councillor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novaselski.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Anthony T. Zambuto has been selected to fill the vacancy.
No, we can, yeah, take me off now, and that'll be great.
Mrs. Zambuto, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, using your own name after I say "I." "I..."
"I, Anthony T. Zambuto."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will faithfully and impartially..."
"...that I will faithfully and impartially..."
"...discharge and perform..."
"...discharge and perform..."
"...all the duties incumbent upon me..."
"...all the duties incumbent upon me..."
"...as Councillor-at-Large for the City of Revere."
"...as Councillor-at-Large for the City of Revere."
"...according to the best of my abilities and understanding..."
"...according to the best of my abilities and understanding."
"...agreeably to the rules and regulations..."
"...agreeably to the rules and regulations."
"...of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth."
"...of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth."
"...so help me God."
"...so help me God."
Congratulations, Doctor. Sign your hand, please. Thank you, also.
Thank you. Can I have a minute? So this is certainly a mixed emotions, bittersweet. First of all, I want to say a few words about my friend and colleague, George Rotundo. We sat next to each other for a long time. He was a friend and a colleague. We didn't always agree. We certainly had our differences. But we had a recount in November, and we both put our arms around each other and said, whatever happens, we're going into this as friends, and we're coming out as friends. And that's exactly what happened. So George was, you know, someone who truly cared about people, cared about the city. Like I said, we didn't always agree, and he might not have agreed with his style. But he was someone who cared about people his whole life. He was a home health aide, an EMT, a nurse, a registered nurse, a cardiac care nurse, always helping seniors with their issues. So he did a lot of good. So whatever you hear, and whatever you might hear, I just wanted to put that out there tonight, that this was someone who truly cared about people and did a lot for people, did a lot for the city of Revere. Like I said, you didn't always agree with his tactics, and you didn't always agree with what he was for, and certainly you don't always agree what I'm for. But he was a good man, and I'll miss him, and may God bless his soul. Now, I'll make this real brief. Everybody knows what they get with Tony Zambuto. I've been here two decades. I always tell you the truth. That doesn't always go over well. I don't sugarcoat anything, and I never tell you what you want to hear. But every decision I make up here is based in science and in fact, and I... It's truly reasoned. Any position I take is a position that's reasoned. And you might not always agree with it, and a lot of people don't agree with some of my positions. But the bottom line is, I do what's best for the city. I'm going to continue to do that. And I'm grateful to be back under, obviously unfortunate circumstances, but I'm happy to be able to contribute to the betterment of the city of Revere. Thank you all very much.
If I can have two minutes? No, thank you. Well, I'm going to take them anyway, how's that? On behalf of the City Council and myself, I would like to welcome Tony back to the City Council. Like he said, it's under unfortunate circumstances and out of his control. And as you can see from his emotions up there, I know he's very sensitive to it. So I want to do, welcome back, welcome him back, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Calendar Item Number 2, Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 7th.
Some moves.
Calendar Item Number 3, Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 12th. Calendar Item Number 4, Motion Presented by Councillor Cogliandro that the City Council Award a Certificate of Appreciation to Mary Lena Legrazzo for her cleanup of Signori Square.
Councillor Cogliandro.
Thank you, everyone. So Signori Square needed some upkeep, and my friend Marlena got tired of looking at it every day. So she decided to go to Home Depot and get mulch and solar lights and whatever else she needed to clean up that area out of her own pocket with her own time. And she cleaned the Signori Square up. And I know that made the neighborhood happy. And I also want to say that, although she's already deserving of this award, but she has plans to do more, I think Tuesday.
Patriot Parkway.
Patriot Parkway.
Yeah, I don't know, this one's Tuesday.
If anyone would like to join, so if I may.
That's really sweet, thank you. I was just walking my dog, decided, let me just clean this up today. And, yeah, I really didn't expect this, so I appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
You deserve it.
Yeah.
An acknowledgement and appreciation for taking pride in her community by beautifying and cleaning up Signori Square, a Veterans Memorial for the Signori Brothers located on the corner of Signori Terrace and Patriot Parkway. Special recognition is hereby awarded to Marlena Legrazzo. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take a quick picture here, get in the center.
Calendar Item Number 5, Motion Presented by Councillor Morabito that the City Council Award Certificate of Accommodation to Deputy Tom Tedesco, Captain Tom Prizio, Lieutenant Jack Carey, and Firefighters Joe Janino and Lawrence Floyd in recognition of their retirements from the City of Revere Fire Department.
Councillor Morabito.
First, I want to say firefighter Joe Janino, Lieutenant John Carey, Deputy Chief Thomas Tedesco, and Captain Thomas Prizio wanted me to express their appreciation to the City Council. And they respectfully were unable to attend this evening. So though they are not present tonight, over the course of their years, they have given the city ninety, actually 132 years of service. So they've always been there for the residents. So let's give them a round of applause. In addition to their years on the fire department, with firefighter Lawrence Floyd, a total of 164 years of service. So I'm just going to be really quick. The courage and bravery, courage and bravery is an essential part of being the role of a firefighter. Each and every day, not knowing what the day entails, not knowing what that emergency call will be. It's an admirable trait because it's traits of a hero. And over the career, over their careers, including your own, there are many lives they've touched that they probably don't even realize they've touched, and so many lives that they've saved. And they are a local hero. So the least I can do is give you this certificate on behalf of the City Council because our gratitude to you is unexpressible, okay? So I thank you for all the lives you've touched, all the lives you've saved, and I wish you a happy retirement on behalf of the City Council. So I'm going to read this Certificate of Accommodation. In acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and mentorious public service, special recognition is hereby accorded to firefighter Lawrence Floyd, the City of Revere Fire Department. In recognition of your retirement from commendable public service on the Revere, City of Revere Fire Department, in which during your service, you exhibited the courage to act, the ability to perform, and the desire to serve above and beyond the call of duty to protect and serve the residents of the City of Revere. And whereas firefighter Floyd's family has sacrificed many precious hours of family time over the course of his career to ensure the safety of all Revere residents, therefore, this Certificate of Accommodation is accorded hereto and witness whereof. This Certificate of Accommodation is grateful bestowed by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens in the 19th day of September in the year of our Lord 2022 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 246th. Signed by City Clerk Ashley Melnick and Councillor President Jerry Visconti, and offered by myself. Thank you for all your...
Just real quickly, thank you to the mayor and the council for your commitment to public service in the city. Thank you to my lovely wife for always being there for me. And just thank you to the people of Revere for affording me just a terrific career. I have no regrets. It was a wonderful time I had in the fire department. And I'm just very thankful to have that opportunity to serve the city. So thank you.
Calendar Item Number 6, Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending the zoning map of the City of Revere by establishing a conservation and open space zoning district.
This is a public hearing, so we're going to start off with proponents, those in favor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Frank Stringi, City Planner. The zoning map amendments you have before you being presented tonight are basically designed to clean up our zoning map, to reflect the actual land use that exists in these areas. Now, there are two amendments being presented. The first one is the creation of a conservation district. Now, it will cover parcels in the TED, industrial park district, highway business, general business, RC1, RC2, RB, and RA1 districts. Although they're zoned for these other land uses, they are actually protected wetlands, marshlands, and open space areas. So for a long time, I wanted to protect these areas and show it on our zoning map so they're not, doesn't create a conflict and inconsistency when people view their zoning map. They see them for what they are, they're conservation areas. They're not TED, zone for TED, they can't be developed. And the assessment of these areas will not change because they're undeveloped parcels. I have a zoning map here, just to show you citywide what I'm talking about. But you all know the areas. It's basically the Rumney Marsh area, which is basically 1,700 acres. We have 17 acres in North Revere that are conservation land. We have area adjacent to Route 1A from Pounder Pines all the way down to Revere Street on both sides that are marsh and wetland areas. We have an area adjacent to Seals Creek. We have an area, Griswold Park, that the city owns, adjacent to Townline Brook. These are all publicly owned areas, and they shouldn't be zoned anything else but that, conservation areas. So that's that in a nutshell. The other area is a triangle in Rogan's Point, which is basically comprised of single-family homes and a single-family, two-family area, a general residential area. But it is zoned general business. In that triangle, you can see it here in blue, and surrounding it is all single-family homes. The last thing I think the city wants to see is any kind of commercial development in that area, which is a flood-prone area and a sensitive area for flooding. So again, to classify the zoning of that area to represent what the actual land uses are is RB, single and two-family homes. This amendment would change it from GB to RB. And the plaintiff will be meeting tomorrow night, probably have a recommendation to you by the end of the week, and then I'll be available to meet with the zoning subcommittee to go over these changes, okay?
Thank you. Any other proponents, those in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side. Any opponents, those against? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side. City Councilors, Councillor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just taking a look at this, certainly can appreciate Mr. Stringi's attempts, and I think it makes a lot of sense. You know, this definitely cleans up a lot of ambiguity out there. When people look at these large parcels, they think that, you know, because they're in a certain zoning map, that there's allowability when going into the deeper roots. It's unbillable land, or it's protected, it should be protected marshland or wetlands. So this definitely will clean things up. So this definitely will clean things up for people, for thoughts on future use, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen, twenty years from now, when, you know, potentially none of us are here, someone's going to come and, you know, say, oh, I want to put up this on a piece of property because the zoning map isn't as clear. So this is really nice. I'm glad that he's able to tackle this project, and I'll be in full support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Obviously, through you, Mr. President, obviously, Frank, I support this. In fact, I'd probably throw a few more, actually many more, locations into this. You know, I don't think it's any secret. I'm much more in favor of redevelopment than development every single little piece of land we have here in the city. It's good that we're blocking off some areas that will put, you know, conservation and put green space for the city of Revere and the residents who live here going forward into perpetuity. I think that, I think that if you were to ask people around the city, they would be very much in favor of this. So I'll be supporting this and look forward to those conversations. Thank you, Ms. President.
Councilor Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is long overdue, and I thank you, Frank, for your efforts. I know that you truly have what's right in your heart, and I know what you do is what's best for the city. And it certainly clears things up for developers and people who were just, you know, coming here and thinking they can buy a piece of land and build on it. This clears all that up ahead of time and, well, long overdue and a great effort. Thank you.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Frank, I certainly want to thank you not only for this, but for all of the positives moves and you've made in the past to make sure that these properties are not built on. I also want to thank you for, and I hope down the road, this, these properties will be a part of this restoration of the marshland as we did down on Gladys and Glendale. I think we probably have capacity now there for a couple of million gallons of water in that area due to your action and your work. And I want to publicly thank you for that and hope that we can move forward with more restoration. And I believe we have something up there now, don't we, for a restoration plan?
That's correct. On the eastern side of Route 1A, on the, behind Bay Road, that marsh area there.
Yep.
We're applying for grant funds to restore that, again, as a salt marsh.
And that's another case, another instance where these are being done to protect the neighborhoods down there, particularly Bay Road, Dunn Road, those areas down there. And I want to congratulate you again on your hard work making this happen. Thank you.
Well, Frank, I just want to say thank you as well for all the work that you've done. This is obviously going to clean up the zoning map, and I think it's a benefit to the city. So obviously, we'll be in favor of this, and it's going to get referred to zoning. But I want to thank you for your efforts once again. Thank you. Yep, refer to zoning. Thank you.
Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met earlier this evening on a, what I consider probably one of the most important matters in the city of Revere right now. And every year, we have elections, and what we've done now is we've approved some of the areas that are going to be used for voting precincts down the road. And I know later on, we'll go back and look at that. I'm happy to hear that the Pines Fire Station, the Jack Satterhouse are going to remain very active, as certainly is the old St. Teresa's Church, which is now the Turkish Cultural Center. And these are all positives moves, all positive moves, and they're going to make voting a little easier, certainly if not easier than it'll be in place for the areas we've already done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll take a roll call on that.
Shall the City Council approve an act relative to voting precincts in the city of Revere? Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the special act has been approved. Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Council Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, the Subcommittee on Ways and Means met. There was one item on the agenda. It's pretty much to, it was pretty much to discuss a procedural vote to accept the departmental revolving funds under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 and a half. There is no financial implications on this vote. It's just simply a procedural vote that's going to allow the city to continue to implement these revolving funds that already exist. So it was voted out unanimously, and it was voted out favorably. So I would request that we vote on it at this time.
We're going to have this on a second reading. So order it on a second reading. Order it on a third and final reading. Roll call the members.
For engrossment and ordainment, shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the departmental revolving funds table of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the parking director to create parking placards for all crossing guards to be effective between hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. This will prevent crossing guards from receiving violations while on duty.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since filing this, I've had a conversation with Director Babo, and I'd like to place this on file.
Place on file.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councilor Keith that the mayor request the chief of police or a representative to provide the City Council with a breakdown of patrolman staffing levels, update on new recruits, and upcoming academy training.
Councilor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to elaborate too much on this, but in essence, just looking for some information in regards to trying to get staffed up. I know that it's been a problem, not just in this industry, but in all industries, but also looking at the next year out where there probably are going to be, people are going to be aging out and or potentially retiring. So I just want to make sure that we're getting ahead of it. So, you know, we are looking for responses to things like traffic control and speeding. We are being greeted with the right, the appropriate staffing level. So that's it. Just looking for some, looking for some information on that. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the chief of police to install a solar-powered message board on a main road in Revere in support of Corrections Officer Matthew Tidman that will read "Tidman Strong." On August 31st, 2022, while on duty, he was struck in the head with a 15-pound gym weight multiple times, which resulted in life-threatening injuries. As a show of support, many cities and towns have begun placing these message boards on roads to show support.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. This unfortunate story was brought to my attention by someone who was born and raised in Revere. They're also a corrections officer, and multiple cities have gotten on board with this. I think the latest one was framing him, and I thought that Revere could be the first one in our area to show support for CO Tidman. Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Novoselfski that the mayor request the MBTA to repair Flaherty Square Park at the site of the former bus stop on Beach Street at North Shore Road to be repaired to its original condition. The MBTA recently eliminated the bus stop at this location and did not repair the park where the shelter was once located.
Councilor Novoselfski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, the MBTA is not doing the best for the citizens and residents of Revere. They're eliminating bus stops. They're causing our businesses on Broadway to be put aside with a bus route, a bus lane certain times, and it is hurting some of the businesses there. And it's obvious that they really don't care about the people in the city of Revere, businesses, or residents. There's talk about even eliminating the bus stop at the Satterhouse, the 411 bus stop on Oak Island Street. I heard a rumor of that today, so we have to check that out. But the bus stop, the MBTA has not been very friendly to Revere, even though we've been friendly to them. And I'm disappointed in the Traffic Commission and, you know, helping them make their goals, not our goals. And in this case, they actually broke up a, an island at the corner of Beach Street across from Peters Roast Beef, Super Beef. And I would expect them to put it back with the same granite. They moved the fencing back and cut out a square, a little triangle, rectangle in the square, and I would expect them to replace it the way it was when we first gave it to them to put in the bus shelter. So that's it. Thank you.
Any, any councilors? No? Correct me if I'm wrong, councilor. Didn't the Traffic Commission just approve the bus lane for them as well?
Yes, they did.
Okay. All right, yes. So all in favor?
And may I say, there's a permanent bus lane now. Before, it was only temporary.
Yes. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. And I believe if there's no further business, this will conclude tonight's City Council meeting. Our next meeting will be held on October 17th. Thank you, and have a good evening.